Good evening. It is 6:30 and I call this meeting of the Lennox School Committee to order. Please be reminded that CTS BTV is broadcasting this evening's meeting. This is the annual school committee organizational meeting, which is why I am temporarily serving as the chairperson. I will accept a motion to table the reorganization of officers until such time as the committee is restored to its full seven-member complement or hear nominations for the school committee chair.
Mr. Superintendent, I make a motion to table the, whatever you said. I make a motion to table the election of school committee member officers until a full complement has been seated.
Mr. Rimmler has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Can I just make a comment? The way that the Roberts rules are, is that we actually have to move to our next available meeting. It's not really, I mean, we know why we're doing it, but it has to, we have to do it to a date certain.
Would you be willing to amend your motion to the next available meeting, which will be the 24th of June?
How about if I, since my, I will withdraw that motion because it hasn't been seconded, and I will issue a, I will make a motion that we postpone the selection of school committee officers until the next available meeting, expected to be June 24th, 2024, whereupon we anticipate seating a full complement of members of the committee.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rimmler. Do we have a second?
I will second.
All right. Mrs. Kirby is seconded. Any discussion?
I don't know if anybody needs an explanation. I think if you saw Bill's email, that explained why we're doing it this way.
All right. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. I turn the chair back over to Ms. Fenton.
Okay, thank you. So I will just start then with the hearing of visitors. It looks like we've got a line out the door. I'll then talk about correspondence and just mention that we did, and I believe it's Ms. Hamilton's civics class, the students do, this one might, might not come to all of us, but the students, if they propose a civics project or identifying an issue related to school, they send it to us. This one happened to be two of the students, I'll remember their names in a minute, and it was interesting because they actually wanted to talk about expanding outdoor facilities for the school, including like a track and just suggesting more amenities to engage more of the kids in physical activity around the campus, which I thought was a very well-thought-out proposal, or, you know, they had some ideas, you know, part of their job is to research, so sometimes their ideas are maybe not quite in, within the purview, but the good news is that Dr. Collins included the students in the meeting with the feasibility committee, so they had a chance to give their ideas to the building committee in the pre-feasibility, feasibility study, is that correct? So that's nice, so we get the, sometimes we all get the correspondence from the students. I'm not sure if this one went to all of us or not, but it's nice when the students have something to offer as an idea, and that is their civics project, so they're probably basically done with it, but they had a chance to actually participate, correct?
And, well, they, they met with, and they met with Dr. Ames and I directly.
Okay, good, to give their ideas, yeah.
To give their ideas, yes.
So that was great, and I'll, before the end of the meeting, I'll try to remember their names, because it's in here, but I didn't put it in my notes.
Dr. Ames.
Yeah, it's Callum Cormick and Evan Laimer, Evan Lobster.
And, great, that's awesome, yeah. Thank you for that. Okay, and then the second is the superintendent evaluation process, so I've now sent out, you're like, another email from Veronica Fenton, but I, hopefully you've had a chance, even if you had a chance to study it, that you saw that the effort was to give everybody the instrument to work with, a copy, but you'll hear the presentation of Dr. Collins's end-of-year, you know, presentation of his goals, as well as some additional information, and then there's some reference items for you to look at, which I basically went through last week, because I hadn't looked at it in a while, to see where do we get all of our instructions and ideas from, so please, 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 if you're working on it and you feel stuck, or you want some help, reach out to either of us, and then we'll, the process would be that we'll get it, we'll get your feedback individually, we'll summarize it, and then Megan and I will go over it to make sure that we feel like it's, it's not just my opinion, but that we feel confident that we're bringing it together as a single instrument to review with Dr. Collins, and that would be the subject of our meeting on the 24th, because we're a little off-cycle of our meetings, because we canceled one. So that will give us also the ability, assuming that we become a full complement, for Mr. Cass, who's the only person who presented himself to the committee, to also do his evaluation, and I've communicated with him that as soon as he's sworn in, I'll send everything. So, he, you know, that'll be good, that'll be, including his information as well, which I think will be good. Any questions now about that, or, good with, did I give you enough of it, all the information you need for that? Okay. I will say also that the raw instrument, if you look at some of the other pages, is much bigger, and I talked to Bob Vaughn about it, and in the past, you know, he and I have made it, you want it to equal the goals that have been out there, because there's a lot of stuff that was, that wasn't specifically relevant to where we are, so you can, we can use that tool however we want. So we edited out the stuff that was irrelevant and just kept basically the goals and then the items that you need to, to fill that in. Oh, great, thank you. Those minutes, we can't forget those minutes, right? Okay, so the next would be going back up to school committee meeting minutes from April 29th, 2024. I will adjutate a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
And I have a second.
I'll second.
Anybody have any comments, edits, or changes?
Alan Stain was absent.
Okay. And, thank you, and all those in favor of those minutes, just signify by saying aye.
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 You got that, Amy?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Collins. Thank you.
Okay, and as, as you are aware, we, a week ago, Friday, had a bus incident on a kindergarten field trip, and so Principal Kelly has a recognition she'd like to make.
Good evening. Brenda Kelly, Principal Morris Elementary School. I want to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude for the outstanding response and support provided during the incident on the school bus returning from the Holy Oaks Children's Museum. Thank you to Amy Monday, Sean Kennedy, Brenda Crane, Mary Jo Savinsky, nurse, Donna Rooney-Stalker, Molly O'Brien, Becky Miller, Anna Pettis, and Paula Carnese, for their efforts in keeping the students calm during a stressful situation. Amy and Sean's quick actions to sue the students and assist those who were injured were truly commendable. Their dedication ensured the well-being of everyone on, on the bus. Brenda Crane was on the phone with me. A special thanks to Mary Jo Savinsky, the nurse on the trip, for her exemplary care. This was her first trip with us, she's also a grandparent of a Morris student. She quickly assessed the students and staff and made the call to Nurse Chauve, who together decided to call an ambulance and police services. She then returned to the school and helped assess all kindergarten students who were on the bus. Her professionalism and swift actions were invaluable. I also want to mention, she also came back and helped with Field Day on Friday, so way to go, Mary Jo. I also want to extend my appreciation to Anna Pettis and Amy Monday, who accompanied the injured students to the hospital and stayed with them until Dr. Collins and I arrived. Their presence provided much-needed comfort and reassurance to both the children and their families. Back at school, Director Kelly and school adjustment counselors Beth Piercing and Cheryl Inzoretsky greeted the returning kindergarten students with water and a comforting presence. Nurse Chauve, Mary Jo, and Nurse Welch from the high school did an excellent job assessing each student to ensure their well-being. Additionally, I want to acknowledge the efforts of all the staff members who handled the dismissal process seamlessly. Their collective efforts demonstrate what a great team we have here at Morris. I'm grateful for my admin assistant, who was on the phone texting me every minute, letting me know how the other kindergarten students were. I'm truly grateful for each one of my staff members and their unwavering commitment to our students' safety and well-being, and I'm just so grateful for the team that I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I would, I would like to add, absent from that list is the very commendable job that Principal Kelly did that day, and as we rode to the hospital, it was the command central, I was on one phone, she was on another, and organizing with the bus company and the nurse, and trying to make sure that the families that had children or staff that were heading to the hospital were notified, and she did an outstanding job, and I know, I, I keep making this reference to the, that climate each strategy for breakfast, but that was a clear example of it. It was part of the Morris climate that, that won the day. There would have been, there would have been no way to have a perfect strategy in place and to know that this sort of thing was going to happen, but the culture of the school rose up and did everything that needed to be done. It was textbook.
Thank you.
We, yesterday was graduation, and we congratulate the class of 2024, just a great, a great group of kids. It was a great day, the, the weather even cooperated, the rain stopped, the sun came out, it was a, it was a beautiful ceremony. What I'd like to do for recognitions is just through the course of the year, some of them you've heard about, and maybe some of you haven't, is just to speak to the retirements that we have, or have coming up for this year. So Francine Schellhammer in fourth grade, Becky Miller, kindergarten para, Ruth Bloom, kindergarten para, Kathy Peretti, pre-K para, Shannon O'Brien, first grade, who will be heading over to Lennox Community Center to be their new director, congratulations to her. From LMHS, Liz Baer, Latin, Jonathan Cade, music, Laurie Weatherby, science, Elaine Lovato and Karen Sincheck, administrative assistants to the principal and assistant principal. And we, we thank all of them for their time in Lennox Public Schools and their commitment.
Can I do it for one second? If some of that may feel like it's old news, because some of those positions didn't fill, but one of the things is to just mention that people's time of retirement throughout the year sometimes relates to their time of service, their birthday, et cetera, so we usually talk about retirement sort of at the end of the school year and then refilling new positions at the beginning, but at any time, it's always good to acknowledge those people.
So some of these happened last year, July, but they happened, these are all the retirements for this school year?
Yeah.
Bill, there's a number of those, or actually quite a few of them, have quite an extensive tenure here with us.
Yes.
Now, and I, I think that perhaps says a lot about the environment and the culture of, of, you know, that we have.
Yeah, thank you, absolutely. And then staffing update, we have Jaclyn Klein coming in for Spanish, we have Nicole Derby coming in for fourth grade, Dave Pugh will be moving from the assistant principal to being a math teacher, Holly Sewell will be the new assistant principal at Morris, Sarah Leadhold, first grade teacher, and we've got Jennifer Messina in for, as the guidance admin. We still have a few positions that we have opened, and once those are filled, I will report those up to you as well. The end of the year, all the end-of-year events are linked and updated in the report. Then the next step also linked in the report is every year, the school doctor, the physician's contract needs to be voted on, and our person from this year is, has agreed to return for next year, and we're thankful. This requires a vote.
So I will, is there any discussion before I make a motion?
No.
Okay. So I will, would move to approve the Lennox Public Schools position contract for the 24, 25 school year.
And that would be for Dr. Lisa Sylvia. Any questions, anybody? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. And next, every three years, we need to update our Student Opportunity Act plan and how we are going to respond to that. It is not a whole lot of money, it's about $15,000, it's less than one per pupil expenditure, and there's an awful lot, as you've seen in the report, that, that goes in, into it. But this, every three years, needs, needs to be updated as well. And if there are any questions about the Student Opportunity Act plan, as we've laid it out, we're happy to respond to them.
Can you kind of describe the gist of it, the focus?
Yeah. So what the state is looking to do is saying there are some populations of students that, that may need some extra help, and they want to know how we are going to identify those populations in our district that aren't maybe achieving as well as others, and how we are going to use the money that they're going to give us in research-based programs that are proven to be effective for these students. I will say that we've had it, the plan returned a couple times. First time, they said, you're, you're looking to help too many students, can you focus it down and help fewer? And so we did, we've identified a process, and with the help of, with the help of Mr. Kelly, identified some of the tools that we're going to be using to address them.
And do we generate a, a report afterwards? Do we have, like, how, do we, how do we quantify the results of, and check and balance ourself? How do we check our plan?
Again, it's, it's, it's an awful lot for a very small amount of money when we're trying to see how effective our $15,000 are going to be for the number of students that we want to help, but, but they do ask this, that same question, is, you know, what is the rubric by which we're going to be able to demonstrate that, that we're making, that we're making progress? And pretty much what we're looking to do is close, to close the achievement gap.
Achievement gaps, yeah. Yeah. Well, what's that money basis? Is it based on our foundation budget, or is it?
Melissa, the SOA formula is to provide additional funding to districts in need. There are a certain number of districts in the Commonwealth that are minimum aid districts, which means that the town's portion of state aid is just a per flat, per pupil amount increase every year, and that's what the district receives. So it would be, if there's 700, students in the district, foundation students, it would be another, in the last couple of years, I think it's $60 this year.
Yeah.
It's been 60, it used to be 30, so we would get an additional 30 per student.
So I was on with the commissioner when they were rolling this out, and they've set it up, so there are some districts that are going to see over a million dollars, right? And they, they want to say that they're giving it to everybody, but our portion's pretty small, they're really looking to some of these districts that have really big gaps, and again, would be seeing millions of dollars where they could, or over a million dollars where they could really implement some big plans.
Yeah.
More good questions?
Okay, so I understand a motion, we don't have to read this whole big long thing, so it'd just be a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act application as prepared by Dr. Collins and team.
Sure.
You have a second?
Second.
And any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All right. We have been talking about the multi-tiered support system since probably the late fall. The admin team, we, we had a, we had a meeting and we identified what were some of our gaps, and where, and how we could best, in four years' time, how we could best be serving the students, and what we need to do between now and then to get there. And we've, we've really struck upon this, one of the main components of our goal is this multi-tiered support system, and Mr. Kelly is going to give us a overview of what it is and what we hope to achieve.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to.
Go through the presentation.
Yes, yeah, you can, I have a little intro, but you can put that on together. So thanks for allowing me to give you some information on the multi-tiered system of supports, and sort of how that pertains to us here at Lennox. Multi-tiered systems of supports is certainly not a new concept, but there might be some folks that are not as familiar, so we're going to go through some of the major tenets of what that means, and then sort of like how we arrived at, like, our discussion and what those implications are going to be really for our district over the next coming years. It's, it's really great that it's sort of falling within this timeframe, because I do see it, the more reading I do, is sort of almost something that would guide either a strategic plan or guide your school improvement plans as such, so it's sort of an overarching umbrella that would really define a lot of your work, and we wanted to make sure that you had this information, because it does have some implications about how we really want to look at our resources and moving forward over the next number of years. So, in our pursuit of obviously trying to make sure that everybody gets, you know, the finest education in academics, a lot of times the challenges that we face is ensuring that every student, regardless of their school or classroom, receives consistent, high-quality support they need to thrive. Variability in instructional practices, resource allocation, and student outcomes can create significant disparities hindering our district's overall progress and equity goals. So, there's a lot of variables. MTSS, we certainly have, probably have components as we started to look at this, but having something that's really consistent across schools in the whole district and all the pieces, we realize really that that's, we have some places where we could certainly do some work. So what is MTSS? So we have some things to sort of describe what this looks like, and really, one of the top things here is looking at your curriculum and having a robust core curriculum, and so one of the key, other key things is having that differentiated instruction within that. So sometimes you've identified that you have a great core curriculum, you don't want to make any changes, things are going well, but are we differentiating enough within that core for students to sort of be successful just at that place? And that really should meet the needs of 80% of the students, when you look at the research. The next thing would be really having valid and reliable screeners and some sort of monitoring tools for all students, and the creation of student support plans based on the screening data and the frequent use of reliable progress monitoring. So that's something that we do in some places in pockets, and we're better at analyzing data, collecting it, looking at it, and probably have some catching up to do in other places, and also to make sure that that's uniform. The tools are different, it's much different at elementary school than it is at middle and high school, things change dramatically within like what the instruction looks like and what you need to do for students who are in middle school and high school, so sometimes your screeners or your tools might look a little different, they may look the same in middle school, might look different in high school. So to be able to catch that data and, and screen students so we get them right when they're having difficulty, and then making plans based on that. The creation of student support decision teams to review student progress and adjust the duration and intensity of planned interventions. So, we have student support teams, but those student support teams at each building sort of function differently. They may have different personnel on them, they may meet differently, have different agendas. Also, you really need to have some really good systems work on how, what are you using for data when you're looking at that? How are you collecting that? How are you getting referrals into your student support teams? And that hasn't necessarily really been defined, so it's not like we don't have them, but there's really not a systemic way of doing that. So, why is it important that we really make some of this transition to MTSS? It's a really guiding principle of our schools, because we want to make sure that we understand what level of support each student needs at that exact moment, and sort of really try to catch students from falling behind. We have many students that certainly do really well, we definitely have some students that we might want to catch and make sure that they're not falling behind. And sometimes we catch those students, and then sometimes there may be students we don't catch. Sometimes we're also finding that we're getting referrals in, and one of the first things that I found when I got here at the end of my first year was, we had referrals to test students, and our eligibility rate was like 50%. So we were getting a lot of referrals, which meant that people had concerns, but they weren't meeting criteria necessarily for special ed, but it didn't mean that those students weren't struggling somehow or didn't have, you know, some sort of support that they needed, which then sort of went back and said, what do we do in those other, when we started having our conversations at the admin level? What do we need to do to help support those other levels when it's not special ed? Which is, the whole point of MTSS is having multi-tiered sort of systems, right? So it's like, tier three really is probably special ed, right? In most cases, really individualized plans for the most intensive services. So this is a really good conceptual model. You'll see some of these, some people used to use like also the triangle to sort of really delineate sort of like where the tiers are, but you can see in here, this has, it's a continuous cycle of improvement, and it sort of encapsulates the different areas that you want to really make sure that you can focus on, so it's not just academics, it really covers social-emotional behavior and the academics. So you could be a student who really does well academically, or maybe even needs accelerated work academically, but does struggle with some social-emotional things and might need layered-in support for that. So those things can fluctuate student to student, and you want to make sure that you're getting that information about each student and where they do need support. Some students may need very minimal support or none. So this allows you to sort of like, each, at each level here, right, define, analyze, and implement research-based instructions and interventions. So you can see, the, the universal is the green, and all students should get a, a core universal instruction in all of these areas, really, even the social-emotional, we're spending a lot of time with students, giving them those kinds of skills in classrooms, on behavioral training in classrooms. Everybody should get that. If some students, which are usually maybe between 5 and 15% of the population, are still struggling, we would give them what's called a tier two, or a targeted support, which could be some group work, which would be layered on top of that. Students still get all of the universal, and then an additional targeted support level if they needed that. Students who still struggle and were, were not making enough progress at that point would need that, and that's usually that 5 to 7% of students here in the red, would need more individualized support. And sometimes those are the students that are referred for special ed or have IEDP plans or 504 plans. And so then that's the cycle on the outside where you want to continually do this kind of work here. Okay, so this also then breaks this down for you again, a little bit more like I was just talking about, so those are sort of the lever, levels right there, you know, your tier one supports is your whole class with differentiated instruction, and so on and so forth. So as I was doing some research, this sort of caught my eye, so I thought I would also include this, and I think this really is applicable for us here, that I don't want to lose sight of, is that now they're also looking at this MTS model with a, like a diamond model, so it really provides a whole continuum of support from students who need possible remediation, all the way up to extension and enrichment. So students on the other side, we may sort of say, hey, we're giving them the core and, you know, universal instruction, but they might need some enrichment activities, and so where do we find those supports and, and other activities for those students to do so that they can continue to excel? So it sort of covers the whole range of those.
And is that percentages, like, is that sort of like, a, typically looking at a bell curve in terms of that number of students?
I don't know if it's a bell, necessarily, but it I don't know if it's a bell necessarily, but it would be, again, most students are going to respond to that. Eighty percent of the students are responding to your core curriculum, or they should. At least research tells you that, right? The other five to fifteen percent, you know, may struggle and need more, but there could be students that are now, especially in Lennox, that are, that are pushing the other way, that could use some more enrichment and or acceleration on the other end of the, on the scale. And I would imagine that could still be like in your, you know, five to fifteen percent of kids maybe, if again, that could use some more of that. So how did we get to our, to here? So like looking at our current state, so I, I mentioned a couple of these factors. Some of this started to come out of when I first hopped on board, I started to take a leadership class and I had to do a capstone project and looking at certain areas. And then it was really good timing because Dr. Collins was coming on and so I said, hey, I started noticing this stuff, can we talk about it in our admin team about eligibility and about support and like consistency around some of this? And so that was discussion kind of level number one and really having consistent sort of practices across the district with this and how student support teams are operating, how are we getting data? How are we making referrals? How are we supporting students and what that delivery model is? And so certainly, you know, the percentage of referrals and looking at that was sort of striking to me because there were so many things that we were doing well here. Certainly other people who were doing their capstone projects had all these other issues that they were dealing with, that we're not dealing with, but I felt like this is a place where we could sort of make some tweaks and sort of enhance things in our district. So it was really great with our admin teamwork that we started looking at. I think it was, it was really great of Dr. Collins to really think like, what do we want to see sort of backwards plan at the end, like in twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight? So like if we started to look at, if we wanted to get to a certain place, what would it look like and then what would we need to have in place? And I wanted to say some of those things we've already begun to do and you've already seen that would make some of those impacts. One of them is the curriculum instruction and assessment role. So that person obviously would be taking a look at curriculum overall, that would person would be taking a look at instruction with differentiated learning in classrooms and certainly would be looking at assessment, data collection, how does that happen in the different grade levels and how are we monitoring students? We, we realize that maybe not every teacher is trained right now in multi-tiered system of support. So what PD does that, does that take to do? And so we'll need to do a certain amount of professional development. The clear processes and procedures, we're going to need to obviously want to sit down and take time and figure out what do those look like for referring students, for holding student support teams? What kind of data do we have and how are we looking at data? So I think we have certainly a lot of data now that's available to us, but how are we looking at that data? Who's getting their hands on it? Where does it go? Like all those kinds of questions, we certainly have it. Paraprofessional training, we have a lot of paraprofessionals who are doing some really great work, but we, we also identified a need that we have a lot of paraprofessionals with students who have, need a lot of support and may not have all the training either that they could to do the job. We had a really fantastic scenario this year where we piloted some co-teaching in one of our kindergarten classes. Ms. Pettis was really, you know, really eager and on board with, with a little bit of some out of the box thinking, you know, to sort of like really meet the needs of some students that we wanted to continue to keep included in their kindergarten classroom who had more significant needs, along with Ms. Crane, who really, you know, has some background also in special ed. And the two of them together have really created a nice atmosphere in the class to sort of keep these students in the classroom, doing some co-teaching, providing that special ed instruction within the class, also providing some of those related services within the class. It's really been a nice sort of model and nice to see. So we know we want more of that. We want to make sure that we can sort of expand how we do that, which is why you probably also, if you'd been paying attention, saw that we had posted for another special ed teacher. So we're hoping that that person can also do some of that work. Right now in the elementary school, it's a lot more work that might be in the class as much as it is out of the class. Also looking to sort of expand on and have some ELA or math interventionist kind of co-teaching at the middle school level. We know and realize that at the middle school, we, we could support some of those students more in the class with some of that kind of same co-teaching and trying to working out. So that's in an early phase right now, thinking about what that could look like and how we would have to train folks to do it. And more directed study halls, so kids are getting a little bit more support when they're in those study halls that we do have that are called directed study halls. So that would be sort of what does it look like at that point? Go to the next slide. And this sort of, sort of wraps up. We want to just make sure that we have all these, the right resources to be able to do this. And a lot of that's going to depend on some real good professional development and some thoughtful planning over the next few years. Really delineating the clear process and procedures and really taking a look at those student support team processes. And we're happy to really continue really this model of looking at this increased push-in with interventions. So that's sort of what that'll look like. So again, we're trying to give you some thought about where we're looking at things and how that could look, because a lot of this is about resource allocation too, like where are people going? Like if we have, might not mean all the time additional, it might just mean how are we deploying people? How are we deploying resources to PD? So a lot of that, you know, just so that when we're doing the budgets each year on end, this should all keep reflecting back to some of this work.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question for you. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Can, can you talk about how this is kind of rolled out over the entire school, like, you know, like, you know, elementary school versus, yeah, you know?
So at an, at an elementary, like which pieces?
Like, is it, is it, does it change and is it varied? Does the grades change? The training of, of the faculty? Does everyone get trained at the same level? Does, how is it implemented in the higher grades, maybe where you didn't have it in the lower grades?
Sure.
That, that uniform going?
Yeah, it will definitely be different. There's a different flavor of what happens in elementary. There's a lot of pieces, honestly, that happen a little bit easier in elementary around like reading data and reading fluency data that just doesn't, once kids have that, most kids already surpass that piece when they're, so then you're looking at different data. So you are training different things, right? It's probably then you're looking at a lot of comprehension skills or writing skills or, so there's different pieces that are not going to be the same at elementary when you're looking at letter identification, letter name and higher differentiating, that kind of practice.
Yeah. Mr. Kelly, if I may, so there are several interconnected moving pieces with this. It isn't just this, it's the CIA director, right? Who's going to be taking some of the, some of these very effective practices that she's been able to institute and then moving up again next year, sixth grade, then seventh grade, then eighth grade. It is, it is looking at our staffing and we've already had a couple of just opportunities happen where we're able to take two pairs at the Moore School and get another special education teacher, which then goes into this co-teaching model. So there's, it's, it is, it is interconnected. And when we had our original meeting about this, said, pull out all the stops. What does, if we are serving all of the students to the best of our ability in four years' time, what does it look like? And that was the list that Brenda Jeremiah and Brian, right, and I came up with. This is what it looks like. Okay, so now we look at backwards design and it's, the point is, we've got to get this up in front of the school committee because there will be some dollars coming to it and we want to be able to say, remember, right? This is why we're asking for this, or this is why we're looking to move, shift this resource over here, what have you. And you're right, the approach at high school is going to be very different in middle school, sort of the bridge between the two.
But the training on say like differentiating instruction, right? A global thought about that and training could, could be applicable for all levels, right? So, so how does a teacher take what they're supposed to get, you know, in front of them with a curriculum, right, and teaching a certain standard? How does that person deliver the instructions so that that can be consumed by many different learners in their class, right? That's, that's something that globally can be PD, right? And then there might be other things that are more intricate or intimate to a specific grade level or grade levels.
And the other end of the diamond, right? When you're differentiating, you're not just differentiating to-
Right.
-get the students who, who may be struggling, there are also students who might otherwise be bored and how do we give them, right, in the same class with their peers? How do we accelerate their experience in the lesson?
So some of this we're already doing, if you think about the positive behavioral supports that we're already doing at, you know, at the elementary level, it's based on a lot of this framework, right? It's the same, they use the same kind of data analysis, the same triangle to support the kids in their sort of learning behavioral and social emotional skills. It's the same kind of thing, the layered supports. You're trying to like build in, you know, all the students should be getting taught all the behavioral expectations and all that stuff so that eighty, you figure eighty to ninety percent of those kids should get it after you teach the kids those. If kids are still struggling with behaviors or emotional issues, then you might be giving them another targeted group experience to like reteach that. So we've already rolled that out and sort of given PD on that. We have, there's a team at Morris that works on that. So that's already underway as well. It follows the sort of same guiding principles and it's just for the behavioral piece of it. Really for academics, we need to spend some time doing the same kind of thing and sort of taking that apart and really like say, what data do we have? How are our student support? We have student support teams, right, that meet regularly to review referrals that might come in, but we want to make sure that those are operating really pretty consistently across both buildings. So there'll be some training on like, how do you do a student support process? How are the referrals come in? What do you do when you get a referral? You know, what is the criteria or the threshold for when, when do you flag a student at RIT? That kind of stuff.
Yeah, and then making sure between buildings, there's continuity of-
Right. 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 Yeah. And same language. That way it's easy enough to know whenever level you're at, what's expected.
Thanks.
Thank you. That was great. Thank you very much.
So to report out the results of this year's school improvement plan, the principals are going to take turns. I believe that Dr. Ames is first.
So maybe rather than the results of our school improvement plan, we think of it as an update on the ongoing efforts.
I like that, Doc. All right.
Yes, if I like that.
The work is never finished, right?
It's true. It's true.
But we get to celebrate along the way.
Just as an overview, we had, we had four goals in our school improvement plan developed really over the course of two or three years because two of our goals are two-year goals. This is developed by our school council in our different buildings and I want to thank them for all their work throughout the year. So what I've done is for each goal, if you go to the first, the next slide, please, just a quick summary of the goal so we remember what we're talking about here. So we'll start with a quick summary of the goal and then I look at the action items of the goal, when it was defined, and then I look at some of the outcomes we've seen so far. So goal number one was strengthening our scheduling and offerings so that the arts and other electives are not secondary offerings. We had, there was some concern about visual arts banned, came up a lot and, you know, why is, why can't my kid be scheduled into band and maybe, you know, let's say AP Biology, for example. And it was, part of the problem we're up against is that we, we have so many wonderful offerings, we can't all take them, you know, B period. I've been in many conversations where I have to explain to a parent that's not a, it's not a problem, it's not a shortcoming, it's just a wonderful thing, that there are so many different things you could take B period. Nevertheless, we want to be sure to make, make sure that it's available as, as best we can. And a big part of our limitation was, was how we schedule. So if you go to the next slide. So the action items around goal one, we wanted to review our existing core elective offerings, talk about how often we want to offer them. What that means is instead of offering, we have a lot of science electives, for example, and instead of offering every science elective every year, many schools now will offer, let's say, I don't know, advanced human anatomy as an elective, but they'll offer it every other year. All right, so you could, everybody gets a chance to take that, but it might not be available every year in the schedule. Review course selection process, we'll talk a little bit more about this. This has, this starts with our teachers and there's a window of time when teachers meet with students to talk about what might be best for them next year in terms of a core class, but also in terms of electives that they could consider. Develop training for students on how to select courses using Power School, talk about that directly on the next slide, and determine how best to prioritize courses as part of the master schedule build. What that last one refers to is you can, what, Power, Power Schedular is part of Power School and it allows you to prioritize or give a rank to which course you look for first in a kid's schedule. But even before that, you can give a, a course a rank to say, this is the most important course in our master schedule. I want you to schedule this as priority number one. And then once the master schedule is built, within a student's schedule, you can say, you know, I want to schedule their English class first, or I want to schedule their math class first, or their, or their arts class first. So from those action items, we've done two things very well. Melissa, you can go to the next slide for me. We're using Power Schedular, part of Power School to, both to change how students select their classes and prioritize classes in the master build. So very successfully this year, due entirely to efforts from the guidance department. Students were, were taught how to use the new template within Power Schedular. They just, you know, go into their Power School and there's a link that says, select your courses here. The teachers in advance had made their recommendations, so the kids already had stuff to choose from and they got to choose. Obviously, the further they get on in high school, the more choices they have. But then, once those are automatically fed into Power School, the registrar at the guidance department has what they need to create the master build. By doing this automatically in Power School, it just buys us time. So instead of taking weeks and weeks and weeks to hand schedule everything, we're able to get this done in January. We know what the, we know how many sections of every class we need and we can start building the master schedule. It's a much, it's a much more efficient process and it gets, today, the data says far more percent of students more precisely scheduled. So goal two, safe school environment. We wanted to continue to combat bullying. I say continue because I think we're doing a lot of things really well. We want to be sure those things stay in place. We also want to continue to add safeguards for our students. Strategies used for this will include social emotional learning, staff and student training, and the enabling of student leadership around equity and inclusion. So toward this goal, next slide, Melissa. Some of the action items we initially considered and we've already completed, some of these include clarifying disseminating school policy procedures around bullying and harassment, making it really clear what this is to kids. And this starts as early as possible. A lot of the work is being done at Morris. It's not a news flash when they come up to LMHS. Worked with the Anti-Defamation League during convocation and throughout the year in PD. When we started talking about this over the summer, I was, I was optimistic, but we, we had a lot of great ideas and we're thinking, there's no way we're going to pull all this together, but we really did. We had, our keynote speaker was Phil Fogelman. At that time, the, the state leader for the, the state representative for the ADL, but we really, there was a lot of talk about, we have to see this through, we have to continue this work. We didn't want this to just be a convocation event and we did, we had a really successful PD experience. Phil's been to our building a couple times to continue that PD and I know there's been work done at Morris as well. We continued our work with both No Place For Hate and A World Of Difference. They call it World Of Difference now, peer training, but it's a, it's the same model. Those are both programs sponsored by the ADL where they work with students. No Place For Hate was a building-wide event. They have to have, there's, there's actually, there's actually a metric, you have to have three building-wide, school-wide events within a 12-month period to maintain your status. Visual Campaigns in Schools, some of you have seen the posters, we developed over the summer and we've also worked towards celebrations of diversity, community and friendship. You'll see some examples of those on the, on the next slide. To the right, focus on the, on the right for a second. We revised our code of conduct. Again, we do this every year. We revised our code of conduct, again, we do this every year. We really wanted to hone in on, on the language around bullying and harassment. That's now published electronically so that we can update it as things develop. So as we need to make a change, we can tweak it and notify people that we've made that change as opposed to waiting until the next year comes around. Newly formed ADL peer leadership groups, I mentioned, it used to be called World Of Difference, it's focused on equity, acceptance, and inclusion. And the school-wide events, we've, we've had a lot of success with. Aaron Malloy has done a great job with student council, sort of reviving our pep rallies. It wasn't just pep rallies, we also had bonfires in the fall. We had quite a few nights where the community really came together, usually around an athletic event, but not always. Pep rallies were, were independent events. And lastly, continued use of anonymous alerts. There are a couple different versions of this, I'm not sure we're going to use anonymous alerts forever, but products like this allow students, faculty, families, anyone really, to report things anonymously that we need to look at as a school administration. We, we, we get a healthy amount of referrals that way. It's often something we already know about, it's often some, something somebody saw and didn't understand the context, but it's good to know that people are communicating with us about things that they think, you know, we need to look into. On the left, I just pulled some, some numbers from, from Power School. Reports of bullying have gone down considerably, so there's, there's an important distinction between the numbers. We could have a report of bullying and have an investigation, but the number of findings are important as well. So in the 2022, 23 school year, there were thirteen bullying investigations with nine findings, meaning, yes, that actually did occur of either bullying and harassment. And this year in 24, 25, there were five bullying investigations, meaning it rose to the level where we thought we had to use a Form A to start a formal bullying investigation, where there was a power differential, there were repeated instances, and we had two findings of bullying harassment. That's not to say there's not a whole lot of behavior that was looked into thoroughly, commented on, and there was a consequence, but in terms of a bullying finding, as we've defined it, as the states defined it, we had two findings this year. Goal three, optimize the middle school program. This and goal four really are ongoing efforts, truthfully. We're, we really want to both make sure we're, we're getting the most out of our middle school. We're, we're blessed with high school, sort of in the same building, and we use those resources a lot. But we want to make sure that we're not, we're not shortchanging our middle school, our faculty, the schedule, the students themselves, in any way. A lot of that has to do with currently the schedule, you've heard me talk about this before. We have this extra instructional period, and we, part of that is that we use the same schedule we use in high school. And in high school, you would simply fill that with an elective of some kind, or a study hall. It's difficult to use it the same way effectively in the middle school, and that's something we've been thinking a lot about. My current thinking is that absent a major shift in the schedule, which we're at least a year away from, likely two, I'd like to see us use that, that extra instructional period less so for instruction and more so for structured play, for example. A lot of research out, out now that talks about the need for kids to develop resiliency and, and, and not be quite so, quite so fragile, fragile is probably not the best word, but that comes from, you know, not, not checking your, your Instagram feed every thirty seconds, but rather, you know, having a, having a conversation on, on the playground, or, or outside behind the cafeteria, on the soccer field, where you have to make eye contact, you have to pick up on social cues, you have to know when to pull back a little bit. And these are things that, you know, our kids don't get enough of these days. We're not going to fix that with a, a period or two of structured play every week, but I think it's, I think there's an opportunity there that we're exploring, so. So to this end, next slide, please. We're looking at how, how we can get the most out of that schedule, and if we are going to change it, what should that look like? I'll talk about how we've done that in a second. And I identify, you know, what's, how can we get the most out of the enrichment parade, right? With that, that fifth period, is it structured play, is it some focused intervention? The problem is, anything you do in that period, it's, if you offered structured play and, and focused intervention, for example, it means that they're, instead of getting essentially playtime, structured play, they're getting extra math major, extra ELA. And that's a tough sell, and it's not fair, right? Those kids, those kids should get everything, so. All right, so to this end, and goal three. Scheduling committee has established and, and meeting regularly. We're looking at, we're, we're surveying our existing faculty and saying, does the schedule work for you? What do you want to see if we change it? What do you want us to not change, ever what's really, really important to your instruction? This year, we've been meeting as, instead of always having full faculty meetings, we've split it up so that we meet as a full faculty, and then the next time we meet, it's just middle school, and the next time we meet, it's just high school. So we're really able to talk about some middle school-specific topics. Let me jump right to the last one. So to think about how other schools are doing this, because there are a lot of middle school, high school models in Western Massachusetts. Twice now, we've, we've traveled to a different school to see, how do they do it? What's their schedule look like, what do they like, what do they want to change? Just ask some questions, some questions about how they're using their middle school time more effectively. Goal four, this is a tough one. Improving written communication ability of high school students. Our teachers have identified, and we've, we've been working on this for a while now. It, it's quick to sort of reach back and say, oh yeah, it was COVID, and the, the timing is, you know, is interesting. But we're, we've just noticed that our students, in general, as they get to the end of, there, there were just a lot of markers that we could identify, you know, the college essays, the research projects. We've really seen a decline in what our, what our students are able to produce, and we wanted to look at that and figure out, what's, what do we need to do, right? What's, what's changed, and how can we recover from that? Next slide, please. We've talked about defining focus areas by grade, so what's happening in eighth grade? What's Ms. Nylan doing with them? What's Mr. Wade doing with them? What's Ms. Getson doing with them? Some of that is driven by standardized testing, and we know what happens in tenth grade, for example, just due to the fact that we're, we're thinking about that test throughout the year. It's not always the case in, in ninth grade, for example, eleventh grade, there's really, there's nothing at stake in terms of testing for, for ELA, right? Identify student learning goals across high school grades similarly, integrate instruction practices, and assessment of refinement, and refinement of instruction. We have high hopes for our CIA director in this regard. This is, if you go to the next slide, this is, yeah, I mean, we're really, this, this goal, and there, there are many goals like this, we're not, we're not exactly sure what's happening with our curriculum from, you know, seventh grade to ninth grade, or from third grade to seventh grade. And to have somebody whose, whose, whose task it really is to, you know, find that line, find that thread, and where is there some slack, where is it taught, and, and, forgive the pun. What can we do about it, right? When does that have to happen? So goal four is reliant on the work that's represented by the CIA director. It's certainly not something we're expecting her to tackle next year, but I think the district's acknowledgement that this is, this is work that should be done, and the work should grow, should grow up to the upper levels of the high school, I think is important. Just a quick summary, nothing I haven't said already. I do want to thank Megan Crane, who took my presentation, which was entirely black and white and, and single font, and said, maybe we could spice it up just a little bit, so. What you're seeing is a result of her efforts. I thought it was fine the way it was, I don't know what she's talking about, but if you like any of what you see, it's, it's to her credit. If you've got fault with any of it, it's entirely mine.
Any questions for Dr. Ames?
More question comments. So something that I've been really impressed with, with Morris this year especially, is introducing kind of the new and, and unique after-school activities. Boys on the Right Track being one of them, Girls on the Run. Those programs are a little bit different than traditional after-school sports programs where they focus on running, obviously, the physical aspects and benefits of running, but a lot about goal-setting, how to communicate, you know, effectively, how to manage stress. I think that's, I'm just curious if there's, if this will kind of include looking at offerings outside of normal school hours?
Yeah, I think there's often, yes, certainly. I think often we, in our, in our heads, we're, we're very, very quick to, there's a firewall between what happens in school and what happens after school. We say extracurricular all the time, but as we, as we look at schedules, for example, a lot of schools are moving toward a flex period. I've heard it called a couple neat things, but it's a, it's a period during the school day several times a week where groups are able to meet. No Place For Hate could meet, Peer Mentoring could meet, the Pokemon Club could meet, that sort of thing. And just trying to find a way to bridge kids' school day, and when they're focused on learning, and they just came out of math class, and that extracurricular piece. It also is a neat way to give kids who are tied up with athletics after school a way to contribute meaningful ways to extracurricular stuff. I just, I, as we think about schedule, I really want to kind of tear down that wall between, you know, what happens before 222 and what happens after 222, because, you know, realistically, it's the same kids, same teachers. I think we've got some opportunities there to, it's not really a gap, but to climb that wall.
The personalization period was, we had it at, at, I don't know if they still do it, it was, it was great, really. They called it personalization, and you could either sign up for something different, you could also get support, you could go see a teacher. You know, if you needed some support in area, like you could also, I had one of my clubs that I ran, which was like I agree, I used to run Dungeons and Dragons after school, but then I started running it sometimes, another period of the, during the day, in that period.
It's usually a shorter block, and it's just an opportunity, some, some schools call it advisory. You know, it depends on the, the tone of it, it doesn't have to be the same thing every day, it could be, you can change it up, but it's just, it's another way to connect with students outside of your traditional core instruction.
Great.
Mr. Rimmer?
Yeah, on the, on the schedule, from a, from a student perspective, as, how are schedulers used by the students?
Yeah, that's part of it.
And then is, that's in conjunction with the counselor, with the guidance counselor?
Yeah, and I mean, in a, in a, in a simpler form, you can imagine some of us use a Google form, right, to populate a Google sheet. It's a similar relationship, right? So we can create a Google form to push out to students, and they just click on their Power School portal. They fill out the Google form, and it automatically completes that Google sheet. The guidance counselor can use Power Schedule to make changes and come up with, up.
And then, you know, if we're, let's take the anatomy example. If that's offered every two years, as, as students, and let's imagine in anatomy, will I, will I have the option to be able to look at my schedule knowing that next year I'm going to take this, and I'm going to have to take that into account at my schedule this year, and the, like, how does that?
It's all, if I understand your question, it's, it's all automated in that we have to create, so the big work with, the initial front-end work with Power School was, Power Schedule was loading in our program studies. Every course, all the prerequisites, how many credits it got, that sort of thing. So once that's all in, you can say, you can tell it when you're going to offer which courses. So when that, the equivalent of a Google form goes out to students, and again, it's not a Google form, but when the equivalent of that goes out to students, on there are only the courses that they can sign up for this coming year. All right, so they may know, for example, and in conjunction with a teacher, there's a, there's an advising period where the teacher would say to them, oh, you know, anatomy's not offered next year, you won't see it on your list of, of options, but if you take, um, if you take apes, if you take, you know, standard biology, for example, you'll be well positioned to take that next year. Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Okay, I got, I got more stuff.
Of course you do.
On your, on, do, do you feel on your statistics for the, the, the number of bullying, or the, the number of investigations that have occurred? Do you feel that we're, we're not looking at an instance where just less people have come forward? Do you feel pretty confident that, you know, the first year was thirteen, and this year it's five, but it's not because there's anything hindering anyone coming forward along those lines?
It's a good question. What I can say is, we've gone to great lengths to make sure students and parents and teachers know what's considered bullying and how to report it. We've included in the newsletter often to remind people that when you see things that you think might need some attention, may or may not rise to the level of bullying or harassment, but these are things you can do, and that includes going to any trusted adult in the building, putting a guidance counselor, a school administrator, a teacher that you're comfortable talking to. You can come directly to the office and ask for a bullying form, and we, we link the anonymous alerts in the newsletter occasionally so people know where to find that, it's linked directly to the school webpage as well. So what we've tried to do is make sure that they know that this is how you can report this. And the other half of that is, we, we then take on the responsibility of being responsive. So when I get an anonymous alert, there are, sometimes there's a way to respond back to the person that, that submitted it anonymously, and I always let them know, this is Dr. Ames, thank you for reporting this, this is what I've done next, please contact me. Again, anonymously, if you'd like for further, you know, if you want to report further information. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a relationship, right? As soon as we throw these things out there, we have to, if we're going to try to build this trust, we have to try to maintain this trust by acting on the information we get, and I, I think that's why we're seeing these numbers go down. It's my hope, anyway. Sure.
I got one more.
All right.
It's about, you were talking, I think in goal four, about
That's Brenda's field, I was clear about that, it's open.
I'll ask you next year. The, we're, we're talking about the
Writing abilities.
Yeah, writing abilities and concerns about that. Has, has there, is there any, aside from the pandemic happening and the, the disruption that that's caused, I've not been to school in a long time, but as, the, the other thing that changed was not only being absent from school, but also an increase in computer-driven learning, it seems like. With Canvas, or a lot more things, perhaps, less books and less, you know, more things on a computer. Is, has there been any, you know, i- is that part of the analysis, I, I guess?
Perhaps, but I would also say that, you know, we, we rely heavily on all those things to teach writing and to teach literature, and so whereas the absence of a bound paper book in every kid's hand every day, in some cases, yeah, could, could be leading to the decline in their writing ability. I would argue that, or I certainly know some people would argue that having a Chromebook and having all the tools we use to bolster their writing abilities might have, might have had the opposite effect with other kids. Well, I don't know, yeah, it might be dragging some abilities down in some ways, but it, you know, for other reasons, could be, could be lifting up kids in other ways. I'm pro-book, I just want to Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Principal Kelly.
Is that the one I shared with you, or is that the other? Um, I think it's the one you shared.
Okay. So the Morris Elementary School Improvement Plan focused around the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's For Standards of Effective Teaching. Can you go to the next slide? Which are instruction, curriculum planning, teaching all students, family, community, and engagement in professional culture. Over the past few years, Morris has focused on creating the conditions that support an environment where all students can thrive. Central to this vision is the integration of culturally and linguistically sustaining practices through these strategies. I can share the slide with all of you later. When I share it with you, when you click on the Morris School Improvement Plan, it will actually come up, and you can see the goals. If you go back to our presentation, I'm going to go and speak towards each goal, which our first goal is the ADL, if you want to click on that, and creating a brave and safe place similar to LMMHS. The Morris staff worked with the ADL throughout the year, learning professional development in strategies on how to implement a culturally inclusive learning environment. You can see, here is a slide from one of my teachers. So staff members who were Um, so staff members who were needed to create their goals this year, you're either can be on, uh, first year or second year, so those staff on a first-year, um, goal, um, align their goals with this, um, our goal in our school improvement plan, which is really how you want to do it, you want to have a school improvement plan, and you want your teachers' goals to align with your school improvement plan. So here is an example of one of my staff members', um, goals in a lesson she did, um, with the name jar. Um, so this year I had, uh, sixty-six percent of the teaching staff align their goals with, um, the first goal in the school improvement plan. If you click on the tiger, you'll go back to the first page. I know, I got fancy, alright. If you now click on PBIS. As many of you know, um, we implemented positive behavior interventions and supports, we have our school-wide expectations. All students, um, follow our ROR expectations, and you will see, um, the graph, which is the tiered fidelity inventory. So we worked with an external coach from the May Institute, and she came in and did a survey, and you can see throughout the year how we've, um, improved, and we have, um, our external coach again next year, and I can bring back that data, um, to, to present, um, in the, in the fall and in the spring. You will see, um, the first is teams, we, we have a team of teachers. Um, we did the survey in, in, in the spring, so that's why there was no data for the survey. And then we, we do boosters throughout the year, so like towards the end of the school year, we're all very friendly with each other. Um, we needed a little, uh, pick-me-up in the cafeteria for, um, positive behavior, so we, students earned a special lunch ticket, and, uh, the grade level with the highest amount, um, was treated to a fancy lunch, which was tablecloths and candles, but was, which was really moving, um, the third-grade students were, was the grade level with the, the highest ticketed count, but when they walked into the cafeteria, the fifth-grade students clapped for them, it was just so moving. Um, so it was, it was really sweet to see. If you click the tiger, we'll go back to the first, and next is our Amplify Science Program, which we've, um, now implemented in second through fifth grade. Um, y- our goal is to see an increase in our, um, CAS in science, and it perfectly aligns. This is a video, in a perfect world, it's gonna work, um, of, in a second-grade classroom, of a student explaining, um, describing her different materials, go ahead. See, and she's wondering, how would you describe, um, a cake? Smells like cinnamon, we're trying to do it by feeling and by looking. Anybody else want to add what they think something is? So, what does cinnamon feel like? Feel sandy? Is it smooth, is it hard? How about any of the other bags, what do you think the other bags are?
And this is heavy, this is a little bit heavier and plump.
So our science program really has the students taking on real-life problems, talking, looking at investigating, and taking on the role of the scientists and engineers, and that has in second grade. And this year, thanks to the approval of the budget, so thank you very much, we will be impl- implementing the Amplify Science Program in kindergarten and first grade. You can click on the tiger and you can go back. And family community engagement was our next goal. This year we surveyed families, um, and these are two, um, post-surveys from our families. Um, our families definitely feel in- included, um, at Morris, they, they feel that their child can go to a trusted adult. Same way with our students, our students feel like if they're having a problem, there is somebody within the building that they can go to. We also practiced, um, several emergency drills throughout the year, including a, uh, practice relocation of, um, parents who volunteered, and this was at a faculty meeting, the pitcher, where we had our faculty go through the process, um, with mock, um, families on how to identify, and, um, we just went through the process, also at our, um, relocation site. A team of us met together afterwards, and, and we just talked about how we could make that process go even smoother if we ever had to relocate. And lastly, professional learning opportunities. Um, we had LeAnn Nicholson, um, work with staff this year, um, she is the author of the literacy triangles. Together, um, the majority of the teaching staff went on learning walks, where they identified a specific area, um, to observe within a classroom, they went into those classrooms. Um, and then together, um, they wrote thank you notes to the teachers. Um, we also planned, um, with LeAnn, close reading lessons, there's an example right there. All staff, um, K to five chose a diverse text when they were planning their clo- uh, close reading lesson. We, the staff implemented them, and then together at a faculty meeting, um, we went through the process and gave each other feedback. Um, also, the PBIS team, um, worked with our external coach throughout the year, and, um, they also went to the Northeast PBIS Conference, um, in Mystic, and, um, the Morris team rocks, we were, um, we did such a nice job with our implementation, we were asked to present at the poster session, and this is where, um, schools from all over the Northeast, um, participated and came up and asked our team questions. Um, like, for example, Ms. White was asked how we involved students the first year, and she talked about how we have, um, fifth-grade students on the ROR team, it was those students who would go collect tickets or, um, help model lessons. Um, we also had, um, our QR code up, so we showed how we created videos where we could push them out to the school, where we're all seeing how to model the expected behavior, um, in the cafeteria, using the restroom, in the hallway, et cetera. And lastly, um, we had our emergency planning, um, with, um, Trooper Shannon Gilbart for our relocation site, and not to mention, um, Phil, um, with the ADL. And that is the school, um, improvement plan update. Um, the Morris leadership team met, um, a couple weeks ago to review the school improvement plan, and as Director Kelly showed in the MTSS presentation, the diamond, um, we do a really great job now, um, at Morris with our differentiation, and now we're looking at enrichment opportunities. We'd like to start including that as we move forward. Any questions?
Thank you. I'll just take a minute to say thank you for the happy video that Dr. Collins shared with us, I was like, okay, I needed that today. Very cute.
Alright, so, uh, next up is the, uh, end of cycle for my goals. You'll recall that, uh, there were four goals, safety and security, equity and belonging, systems thinking and communication. And, uh, I want to point out, along with those, but were some, those were the explicit goals, but there were some, there were some implicit goals as well. I really felt that I came in and was charged with, uh, creating a calm, steady, reliable environment. I felt like, um, again, that I, I was charged with, um, making sure that I was present for staff and, um, student events. And I was showing interest in the things that were happening in, in both schools. Additionally, another implicit one was to, um, take this group of, uh, individual administrators and create a, a cohesive team. So really, I think, um, I took, took, you know, took this team and, and sort of said, well, you know, what is their, what is their capacity? I think there were a couple times when we bumped up against it, maybe, in the, in the year, but what, um, uh, I'm really proud to report that this is a very, um, cohesive leadership team. We've really, I think we've developed some trust, our meetings, we can be open and be critical friends to each other, um, and, uh, I, I believe that that is really, um, part of, if, if, if you feel that this year was successful, um, I, I attribute it to the, to the, to the admin team. Um, certainly, you know, the, the, the teachers are amazing, my work primarily is with, is with the admin team, then works with the teachers. And then one final, um, implicit goal was to take advantage of opportunities as they arose, right, if, if, if there were opportunities for, to, to seize upon them. So, starting with the safety and security, to build, um, relationships with key emergency response leaders, and, um, that, uh, I, I, I feel could not have gone, um, better. The relationship with the police and fire is just amazing, I wrote a letter to the select board to, um, just commend, um, I, I, I reached a point where I felt like every other day I was saying thank you to one of the, one of the chiefs, O'Brien, and, um, a- anyway, they have just been, um, been there for our planning, been there for our drills, been there for our after-planning. Um, they sh- they share any warnings or things that are coming out, um, across the state, whether they are pranks or legitimate. Um, we, uh, we have a, a really good relationship, and, um, a- and that also extends to SRO Colvin as well. Um, the smart security partners, so, uh, we, we hired, uh, this firm to come in, uh, recommended by the Massachusetts Chiefs of Police to look at both, uh, to look at both schools, and our business, our building team, the school committee's building team, then, uh, met with the presentation, um, and there's some parts of it where we don't share publicly, because we don't want to share our vulnerabilities with, um, you know, with the bad guys, but we are working, we are working on, uh, we're working on these things to, um, secure up some of our vulnerabilities um, as we move forward. Um, both the principals intended, uh, attended the FEMA Incident Command Training, um, so if there is, uh, if there is a catastrophic event and, uh, it's, uh, to that level, they, um, will be able to interact with the emergency response teams that come in. Um, we have worked to increase and expand our safety drills, uh, and, you know, part of the great response, um, to the bus incident, I think, is because of all of this training that we do, we practice and practice and practice. Um, and, uh, and both schools have moved forward in a degree of, of practice, and we're really at the point now, as, um, Principal Kelly spoke about learning, um, how to do the reunification, which is, um, a lot of schools never get to that step, but, um, it's a big piece. Uh, we are one of the few, uh, districts in Massachusetts that is going through the Homeland Security Behavioral Threat Assessment Management. We just had a meeting with, um, with, uh, the police chief, the SRO, and our, um, our admin team, uh, the principals and, and Director Kelly. The, uh, when, when I came in, there were some, um, aspects of the, 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 the safe in the district office didn't have a lock, and there were a number of things that we, uh, that we've done to secure, um, the records to meet the regs and make sure that they're all safe and secure. Um, uh, and then, um, we had those presentations, you recall, on the B-Spot Initiative about securing firearms and your resolution to do so. We have increased who gets, um, Massachusetts Criminal Offender Record Checks, so CORY checks on people's background. If, um, if you were going to be volunteering, um, we, we include that. We want to make sure that we're never in a situation where we have somebody that, that we haven't vetted alone, uh, alone with a student. Um, also, um, if somebody has had a, a, a felony, then typically, uh, I will call them in and meet with them personally to, um, make sure that whatever occurred, um, isn't going to be a threat to, to students. Uh, we have, we received the, um, Hate Prevention and Anti-Bias Grant and put that to, to good use. With our, uh, professional development, we're also building a library for staff members, we've been working heavily with, um, with Phil Fulgham in, uh, in his role as EDA, and, and now he's, um, he's retired from there, and he's doing the consultancy with his thirty years of experience, and we're going to be, continue to work with him. Uh, participated in the, the, um, the webinar, the FBI and State Police had a, have, had a webinar, it was at a point when, um, there was a lot of false, um, information going out to, to schools to kind of get them to scramble, to get them to lock down, and, uh, and they had a whole webinar on how to, uh, differentiate that. Following all of our drills, we do what the emergency committee calls a hot wash, it's the, the debrief, and we've, uh, and we've had those after each one of our, each one of our drills. The, um, uh, the Chiefs of Police have, uh, an, an organization, and they're just starting to take some superintendents on, um, but the Behavioral Threat Assessment and Management and the Vi- uh, Violence Risk Assessment Committee, um, they've asked me to serve on that committee. Um, and so I'm doing that, and then also the School Safety and Security Committee, I've joined those, and they're, they're quite informative. Um, and we learn a lot from the police side of things. And then on to equity and belonging, um, as you heard from both the principals, making the schools socially, emotionally safe environment for students and adults, and, uh, and this sense of belongingness and training, and, uh, as a school committee, you've gone through that, I would hazard to guess more than any school committee in the commonwealth. Um, uh, the administrative team has, the educators, the staff have, the students have. We've done the survey climate, uh, ser- the surveys to see, school climate surveys, to see, uh, to assess exactly where we are and, and what are our weaknesses, and we'll be tweaking those for, um, for next year, they'll go out again, um, to, to hone in a little better on what we're, what we're looking for. Um, again, uh, really, it is, um, we, we can only be as good as the administrative team that we have, and these, these folks are, are excellent, and, um, it's one thing to be excellent individually, but it's another thing to be excellent together. And you can, you can see it, I see it, on a pretty regular basis, when we're talking about the, um, what do we want to have, um, the ideal support for students to stand back and watch, so the three of these guys, well, we do this, and we do this, and we, and bouncing off each other and, and working together, it's, it's great. The, the, the recent bus incident, um, Jeremiah was immediately, tell me what Morris needs, what do they need, we'll send it down, right? And they sent down a nurse, um, but they were prepared to do whatever it took to, we're a district and not just two individual schools, um, and this cohesiveness. Uh, our conversation right from the beginning, the message of saying it's a, a, a brave and safe space, and repeating that, um, and letting them know it's not one and done, but it's, it's a a journey, and we're on this and working together, and supporting the school culture of belongingness, where everyone feels they belong, adults and students alike. I've been with Ms. Benton, serving on the Berkshire County Bias and Hate Task Force, which is getting a new name. And our professional development, it went over very, very well. We talk about seizing on opportunities, again, meeting with, meeting with the principals and saying, okay, forget about the way it has always been. What would the ideal professional development look like? What would teachers want to have? What are they yearning for? What would it look like? And the two of them just bouncing these ideas off each other, and it just got better and better, to the reports were that it was, you know, perhaps the best professional development some folks have had in their career. So kudos back to the principals. We've added, I think, 11 new, and we already had a bunch, I think we've added 11 new student clubs and student activities this year for students. So there is, trying to have something for, for all the different interests, and again, to feel like you belong if you're here. So then systems thinking, this is the, this is, this is the big one. This is connecting the dots. This isn't just individual things in their silos. This is having, having our, having what we're doing run as, from beginning to end, as a system, as a mesh. So establishing procedures and protocols. And as you know, there's been a lot of leadership turnover, so each, each time, the procedure or the protocol, the policy may stay the same, but the procedure and the protocol might, might change. And to, to establish those and put out memos or graphics that say, you know, this is, this is what you can expect, consistently. Having that propensity for yes, that I spoke about at a convocation, and a lot of the very best ideas aren't, aren't my ideas. They are ideas that come from, they're ideas that come from the administrators or the staff, sometimes from students or parents. And having a propensity for, okay, I don't know how we get there, but I don't want to close the door. And that begets more, more ideas coming. And, and the more ideas we have, the more opportunities we have to have, to seize upon them and, and make the school more responsive. The MTSS presentation was reimagining how, originally reimagining how we deliver special education, but then widening it to say, okay, how do we deliver education, period? How do we make this service delivery the best and most supportive that we can? Being fiscally, having a fiscal, fiscally prudent approach to building, building our capacity. I think the CIA director and, and the benefits that Melissa is taking over, making that shift from the, from the town, the human resource piece, having the facilities coordinator come in, and to be able to do that without a big impact on, on the budget. And then as a effectiveness and efficiency, where we've been moving slowly and steadily toward paperless forms and searchable e-documents. Trying to make it an employee being, seen as an employee-centric employer, so we can attract and train and retain student-centric employees. And the better job we do with that, the more people we're going to be able to attract, and we are going to be able to pick the very best people who are going to be the best fit for Lennox. So recruitment and retention, we have these conversations regularly through our admin meetings. The new teacher induction and mentoring program is, is off, and they're going to be the first group that's going to really experience that, will be next year's new teachers, but we have a leadership team, a team of teachers. We talk about truly distributed leadership. When I co-authored a book about teacher leadership, this is, this is the model of it. We're, we're living it. I've said to them, after we get this a couple of years under our belt, I'd really like to see them present on it, because it's very exciting stuff. Have it be genuine teacher leadership when we're talking about bringing in new teachers and mentoring them. Having the professional development not be boring, be meaningful. Have it be like a class from the best graduate course you ever took, is what we're looking for, what we're aiming for. For people to leave and not have it be one and done, and see the connectedness of, of where we're going, and that comes back into the CIA position, again, seeing this, this connectedness, and not have these be individual professional development opportunities, but to see the theme of where we're going. Melissa and the restructuring of the, the human resources is again being employee-centric and having employees have, our employees have that point person, one person they can go to, to get, to get all of those answers. Again, looking for opportunities for teacher leadership and empowerment opportunities. Teaching is one of those, teaching is one of those activities where unless you change your job or you become an administrator, at some point, you've been doing this for a long time. You can have 20 years in and still have time left in your career, and what jazzes you? What is going to reinvigorate you? And we want to be able to offer those opportunities to empower teachers and give them leadership opportunities to, to take, to take their passions and, and keep them, keep them fully engaged. And then we're, another opportunity that we seized upon, I think this was actually Dr. Ains' idea, but we were piloting this master's degree tuition reimbursement. So the idea is to get the very best folks out of their bachelor's programs and offer them tuition reimbursement, which is actually less expensive to us than hiring someone who's on the master scale. And then they go into our new teacher induction and mentoring, and they learn the Lennox So the school committee did outstanding work with the core values, which are going up on the website, if they're not already up there. The curriculum and student support, the elementary principal succession plan, which is part of the CIA directorship and bringing in the assistant principal, the multi-tiered support system continuum, the, we, we were one of a handful of schools that piloted the draft educator evaluation system, which takes this sense of belongingness and works it right into the rubric, instead of having it be a separate column. And then, of course, the director of curriculum, instruction, and assessment, and all of that, that that will bring us. And then communication, having the, having the school committee not be caught by surprise, to have the communication they need, the trends that are happening in the state and the nation, as well as incidents that are happening in the school, so that you can respond to your constituents, should they, should they ask you questions and make informed decisions here in your role, your governance role. The meetings, we meet regularly with the, the admin team meets, we pull out, we've got a separate principals meeting, we've got a district office meeting, just, just for the superintendent's office, and I meet regularly with the LEA leadership. We've got a firm that does, that are communication specialists, because there are so many wonderful and great things that are happening, and we recognized that early on, but trying to communicate them, you may, can, can take away from other things. So we have this group, and we send them, they, they sort of craft, they, they craft it in a way that then goes back to us. We sort of wordsmith it and, and send it out, but we have been able to increase dramatically the number of positive press releases and social media presence. I'm super thrilled with our new website, and particularly with the Thrill Share Lennox Public Schools Smartphone App. Having that app, having most people carry a smartphone, and they can access everything that's on our website on that phone. It really is, it really is pretty cool. And talking about communication, they can know what's on the menu, or the sports teams, they can know whatever they, whatever they need to know, whatever's on our website, they can, they can get off this app. We started the alumni corner trying to, trying to, twofold. One, show our current students what some of the people that went before them, some of the amazing things that they've done, and they are, whether they're members of our local community, if they've gone on to make a global impact. And also to connect our alums back to the school, to have them be able to see that we are still featuring them, and having them come back and look and see what some of their classmates are doing and such, and to continue that connection. And we've been doing, presenting out at professional conferences on the, on the things that we're learning, particularly around the belongingness. And then this is just a list of some of the local and state people that, since I've been here, that I've connected with, made connections. And then other things, my own professional development, the, even though I'm not a new superintendent, this is my first superintendency in Massachusetts, so the new superintendent induction program, again, presenting, there's some overlap presenting with, on what we're In the, talk about seizing, you know, taking advantage of opportunities as they arise, the building proposal for additional freestanding classroom, we didn't foresee that anywhere, and it arose, and, you know, here we are with a feasibility study underway to, to look at that. The budget process, so we are looking at changing, we're starting to work on changing the way that we budget and to be able to give, right now it's very centralized, and what we want to be able to do is give the director, the principals, their piece, so they can see, hey, I am, you know, right, I'm, maybe out of this pocket, I'm not going to spend as much here, but boy, I'd really like to get this opportunity for kids here, and be able to propose some of those shifts without having to come sort of through us to do it. And, and we also rolled up our sleeves and looked at the process a little differently to try to make stronger connections with, with our programming. And Melissa has been fantastic at that. I don't know that I've ever dealt with a, a, someone in the business managing role who has been so receptive to tying budget to, to what is, to what is happening in the Megan's subcommittee on Policy Development is doing really strong work and, and looking at making the policies reflective of what we're, what we're doing, and keeping children safe and, and having appropriate guidance, and getting rid of some of the stuff that is redundant, that is, you know, in law or DSE regulation. It's, when it's done, it's going to be a very usable document. Again, implicit, just kind of steady, dependable, non-reactionary, that people can kind of get, get back to the work and not worry about drama, and try and be present at school events. So, you know, I feel that collectively with the admin team, you know, had, had we done half that amount of work, it would have been a touchdown. It's a good, it's, it's a good team, and, you know, it remains for you to what you feel, but I, I feel like it's, it's a pretty good fit. I'm very happy to be here and be working with this great group. If you have any questions, I'm open.
Questions?
It's okay.
So, I mean, this is a very comprehensive, very, you know, detailed, dense with a lot of, a lot of information in it. And I think it's, what we can appreciate, what we cannot appreciate is with all of these things, what actually is going on behind the scenes, to make all of these initiatives and, and items happen. What I'm kind of curious about is, when, when I look at this in a whole, as a whole, what are the things for you that really stand out over the past year in, in, in terms of both things that, that have occurred and things that we've taken on that you wanted to devote more time to in the coming year?
So you, I'll answer your, your second question first, if that's okay. We need collectively, and, and I think we're in a place to do this, we need collectively to show, show the staff some, some love, right? To, to have Principal Kelly's position as it evolves there, to be that support, to have our professional development be meaningful for them, because they, that's where the rubber meets the road. They're the ones who are face-to-face with the students. And if we are putting, if we're putting our staff in the best place, not only are we going to attract the best staff, because when they're out with their friends from other districts, they're going to be like, you won't believe it, like my district is, right? Very employee-centric, but if we are, we're, we're going to ask a lot, we are asking a lot, but we're also building that capacity to meet that ask. So to, to continue to, to continue to do that, if, if we, if, if we can build up and support the staff to the best of our ability, no, we attract the best staff, but our students will have the very best experience, right? And with that, there'll be less absenteeism, right? There'll be a whole bunch of ancillary benefits that, that come along with that. So that's your second, that's the second one. And the first, there was, you know, one of the things that I would say is that I think that, that my effectiveness, in a way, right, the administrator's effectiveness kind of depends on me, right? My effectiveness depends somewhat upon you all, really. And so without, without that support, right? So when I say to the administrators, think big, pull out the stops, let me worry about the conversation with the school committee, right? You worry about the conversation with me, right? Pull out all the stops, tell me what is the best look like, let me be the roadblock, right? And, and I haven't, I haven't run into that roadblock yet. I appreciate the support. And there's, there's a very broad perspectives and different blocks of life that all the school community members come to, but individually, you know, and collectively, I feel like I've, I've been really supported. And the other piece, big surprise to me, I've never been in a district where the budget passed without a single name, right? That speaks volumes about the value that the community puts on school and, and what they want. And with a good, with a functional committee and a great admin team, we can, we can deliver that, you know? I think that the future looks very bright.
Just a quick comment. It's been a long time since we've had such a cohesive, effective leadership team from principals, superintendents, and that's just been, it's been one less thing to worry about, and it's been much appreciated. I think the community recognizes that as well, so thank you all very much.
Yes, thank you.
I thank the team.
And I would just add what, to what Megan said, is that in, in the budget process, of course, we heard over and over again that when we were able to articulate the strategies and how, even though it was a bit of a push for some more money, I think we were all well-informed, and so then I feel like, at least I felt that I was well-informed enough to then be prepared to answer questions on the street or wherever we were, and that it was strategic and cohesive, and we could understand it, ask questions, and feel like, even though sometimes questions were not related to what we were doing, but that we could, I felt like I could articulate what we were doing in a way that really helped us to have that transparency, speak to the community about what they're supporting. You guys would do that repeatedly in these meetings, so therefore, I think there weren't a lot of surprises, and I think people were... And I think people were engaged and so I think that was really great. And that was a multi-meeting, multi-level, different subcommittees, you know, between HR and budget and finance and thinking about learning and culture and all those things were all coming together. So then when there was an ask, it wasn't really a surprise because it was a combination of conversations. I really appreciate that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you. All right, I think that moves us to, I don't think we have anything unfinished, except in the sense that some of the unfinished comes in with the new. Which is we have our joint meeting on Wednesday, I sent you information of that. I can say publicly that Orin Cass was the only person submitting his request. We'll do the interview at the meeting and then we'll vote. As you saw, I think you might have seen by now the agenda that Amy posted for us that basically echoes the same thing on the select boards, we basically have the same process. And it should go pretty quickly, so that'll be good. And then Orin will just need to come when it's commended for him, assuming that he's voted, to get sworn in and then we'll get back to full complement of the board.
Good question, you said there was an agenda for the meeting Wednesday?
So. Yeah, Amy had to create an agenda, share it with them. It really is literally like, we're going to meet, we're going to talk about who's the chair, we're going to ask questions. And then we'll vote. There's sort of a little bit of like, I mean, Ed is the chair of the select board right now, I'm the chair of this committee. So we decide who's going to run it, but it's going to take two seconds. I mean, again, it'd be a different process if there were multiple candidates, if there was, the process we shared with you, there were like five candidates. It's very different, this will be more succinct. And then we did, I will, do want to say on bullet two, because we need to do Dr. Collins' evaluation public, I've added, we've added proposed for the June 24th. I put the date on there, but of course, if someone says, no, I can't make that date, we can, we can keep working on a date. I did happen to check with Orin, he's available. So I think I have the time on there at six thirty, we could do six o'clock. I know we're thinking about shifting to six o'clock, so certainly we can adjust that if you all want to.
Could we do six o'clock?
Yeah, definitely.
Does that work for everybody?
I think that we were planning to transition to that. So I think it was just a mistake on my part to just do six thirty. Is anybody else concerned about that date? Okay, perfect.
So six o'clock on the twenty-fourth?
Yeah. And then if there's something between now and then, of course, it will be a, a public meeting. And if there's anything else we feel like we need to put in the agenda, because of the way we tabled the officers, that will be the first order of business, because it's, it would be our next meeting when we all meet. So we would do that at the beginning in the same format that is listed on the agenda for tonight. And then go through doing the public part of the evaluation. And then we have already scheduled our annual goals workshop for the 22nd. That's sort of similar to what we talked about in retreat, I think focuses on getting the goals. And we were, we worked on the schedule to try to have the timing, just like we talked about. The school improvement goals, Bill's goals, our goals, all kind of run together. And if we come up with something that we have not heard thus far, we give them an opportunity to think about how to slate that into their goals. That's for the July meeting. Questions or anything?
Refresh my memory on the, the public meeting, on the superintendent's goals. Is it, you had mentioned earlier, do you take a synopsis and what exactly, refresh my memory in terms of what exactly happens at that meeting?
I, I've lost you a little bit, which meeting you're talking about? Where at the annual goals workshop?
No, the superintendent evaluation.
Oh, the superintendent, oh yeah. I said scheduling of additional school committee meetings, sorry. The reason that we are talking about scheduling the additional school committee meeting is to, A, get our officers elected and get that settled. And B, we take Bill's evaluation, Dr. Collins' evaluation, which we will be doing. And then we do a public presentation of the summary evaluation. We've done that before, Bill, Bob Bond's led that. So we do our evaluation, I summarize it, sit with Megan to make sure that, like, we feel like we feel good about the summarization, that it's, we share kind of the idea of what we're reading and seeing, so that's just not one person's perspective. And then we share it with Dr. Collins. And then we have our public meeting where it's shared out to the public and then people can also ask questions and, I mean, we can ask questions, but we will have all participated in our evaluation. Is that helpful?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying, I'm just, I, I just can't remember if it's, if, if there's numerical portions of that evaluation versus ad hoc commentary.
I think that there'll be, when you look at the instrument, there's like, you know, the proficient, the excellent, however that comes together. I guess there's a numerative part of that, numerical part of that, because it's summative of all of us, right? So if, if it, you know, be a, sort of an average in a way. And then there'll be the commentary. And that will be the part that we will summarize so that it will feel like it's the flavor of all seven of us, rather than just one person's point of view. So that's in the commentary and then there'll be.
Yeah.
So for example, we could have the proficient or the excellent or the needs improvement, depending on the numbers and how they come in. And then we'll be able to go through that.
Maybe perhaps individual comments that characterize that.
Yeah, and we'll summarize those together with a few bullet points or something. I mean, sometimes I think Bob said that he gathered them all into the documents, you can see everything together. But then sometimes there'll be things that are duplicative, so you can kind of condense it down if it's, if we see similar comments.
Anyone wants a printed copy of the evaluation tool I have in mind?
Yeah, there's the computer tool, but if you'd like to have the paper.
I would like a printed copy.
Does it make sense to kind of skip over subcommittees right now?
Yes. I think it does. At this point, we're not, we typically, with subcommittees anyway, kind of take the summary off. But we have to reconstitute them, which we'll do after the meeting on the 22nd. And I don't think I have anything else. If anybody has any questions or comments? I'll just want to just quickly say, because school is ending, but, you know, we are still have one, one more meeting that, you know, will be after the school period ends, so thank you all. There's been so many wonderful concerts and celebrations and presentations. I haven't been able to go to nearly as many as I like to. It was really wonderful seeing the students perform at graduation and then seeing this great videos of the Morris School kids. So it's a lot, so thank you. What's that? Yeah. So thank you. And hearing nothing else, if nobody has anything, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor? Thank you, thank you all very much.